Good evening. We will call this meeting to order. The regular City Council meeting of January 22, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I'll start with roll call. I know Susan Snow is excused. Everyone else is in power for. Please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, item four is consideration of the agenda. Do you have any need for any modifications or adjustments? Seeing none, anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I'll maintain motion to approve the agenda. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
Any of us? All right, that's your man. Item five is consideration of the consent agenda. Tonight we have meeting minutes from December 18th, January. We have bills from December 10th to January 10th, receipts from December 10th to January 10th, and profit loss statement included from December 10th to January 10th. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll maintain motion.
Second.
To approve?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any votes? All right, that's your man as well. Okay, next item is announcements of close funds.
Yes, I just had something from Depot Bay.
Oh, yes.
They are having, I think it's this Saturday.
It is.
Yeah. The Emergency Power Solutions Rally, 11 to 3:00. And they're having a potluck dinner and some other things at 6:00. So I...
So it's open to the public and there is a, I got an invite for mayors and coastal leaders, I guess, from 10:00 AM to 12:00. They're going to give us a tour. Depot Bay got a $95,000 grant to look at an energy solution. They're looking at a freestanding hydrogen fuel cell that would power the city for two weeks if there was a long-term outage. They got the grant to basically, you know, proof of concept kind of thing for a small city, and they invited all the coastal mayors. There would be potential, if this works out, that these could be installed in each of the little coastal communities. Because typical homeowners, you know, with the generator and if I don't can't gas, it's good for quite a day. And if we had an extended power outage, which is not going to, we don't, don't have anything this year, but one year ago, basically, we had an ice storm and we lucked out, but a lot of folks didn't, and you know, an extended outage, you'd be in a world of trouble. So I'm going to go in the morning, and then they do have lunch, and then a potluck dinner, and there's a band, and I think it's the mayor of Newport sings in the band, so...
What's the date again?
It's this Saturday.
Yeah, this Saturday. So everybody's invited, if you're interested. And there's the email, and there's a flyer on their webpage. I don't know if you have a flyer, remember? They've got flyer.
I think they've got flyer.
The Depot Bay, the city of Depot Bay event, so... Yeah, the mayor of Newport is the singer in the band at 6:00 PM. If you guys want to up your game, put together a band.
Mayor, you know if Senator Lincoln will be going?
I'm sure they will be, because you can't have a community backup power without coordinating with the power company, or the lineman would be electrocuted if they start working on it. So, yeah, I presume that you'd have to have permission, otherwise we have no way to distribute power, right? We're not going to build a parallel set of power lines, so... So they're going to make a presentation to the elected officials early, and I think they'll get into the specific details for a community, and then the public's welcome all day. So for anybody that's interested.
Maybe you can report back to us, those who can't go?
Yep.
Because it's fascinating if we might ask them.
Yeah. I will do.
And the only other thing is, is that this Saturday is the very first community event, which is the game day, and it's again this Saturday from 1 to 4. And then we're also planning next month, possible a shred day, so if anyone will be able to bring some shred, their shred to shred here, do you think that's a deal?
All right. Item seven is citizen input on items not to be discussed on the agenda. I've got four people that signed in, and we have more people in the audience now. Bob, you're first. Did you want to speak on anything, Bob? Okay. Robin and Jamie Mills? Anyone to discuss now or here for questions and answers?
No, I thought that was a sign-in sheet.
All right, thank you. Geneva Jackson?
Well, I came to talk about water, but I think that's only, we're going to have an opportunity to do that later, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
And Jeanne?
So I'm, for those of you who don't know me, I think most of you do, I'm Jeanne Jackson, and I've lived here for many years, right here in Westlake, and I want to welcome you to Dune City, the council. Sorry I missed last week. I only missed one meeting all last year, it was the first meeting in January, and this year too. I unfortunately caught one of these bad viruses that's been going around. Thought I'd spare you all and keep my virus at home. But I certainly hope we have a good year ahead. I am very concerned, my main concern is, I'm finding there's more and more a lack of transparency since things have been changed over. It was close to impossible to access information during the holidays, and I reached out a few times, not realizing no one was even answering the phone. And are you aware, it still says if you have an emergency to call Jamie Mills. Well, I know Jamie is retired. So is that still accurate, that you would call Jamie about an emergency?
Are you talking about the phone message?
Your phone, yeah. It still says to call Jamie.
It's on the message.
Which is... So I'm not sure if you are aware of that, or she was aware of that.
I think there's two different messages depending on what time of day, and I think you're right, if you call late at night, it goes to the old message.
Yeah.
Or, was during the holidays when we were closed.
It may be, but usually the best thing to do is call the company. There's a number in there for them to have them change the message. That's the man's voice that you hear.
Right. So I thought that was changed, I'm sorry.
Because the other one's more recent, Becky's was.
Yes.
Yeah, so I knew it was changed, but...
Yeah, I thought you might want to update that, because I called a number of times, so did other people, and then I realized, oh, you're, you're closed for a period of time. Yeah, and thank you very much, Mayor, for answering my email, because I was trying to reach out to somebody, it's very hard during the holidays. I think there is a lack of communication here in terms of what's going on at the planning commission, what's going on at the council meetings, and I think as the mayor and the councillors, you should very much be aware of what's happening at the planning commission meetings and how people are being treated. Because although the attitude and the tone has really improved at Dune City, and I thank you all for that, I am not finding that's the case at the planning commission. And I think this is a problem, and certainly as people who certainly care about Dune City, and all of you do, or wouldn't be sitting out there, it would be nice if at some point people could talk to one another about that. It shouldn't be so hard to get ahold of somebody. But I thank you for responding to my email, Mayor.
You are. Thanks for your time.
Yep.
Next is mayor report. I think we're going to cover kind of our topic of lately, we've got the Water Master's Office here in just a second, and the other is the, we introduced the FEMA, the revised ordinance that FEMA recommended that came through the state. We introduced it, it was not approved, it was tabled, and it was tabled in a number of cities. This affects coastal Oregon, and I still get letters from the Coastal Mayor's Caucus. There's 29 cities involved, and Seaside Mayor Stephen Wright is the convener, I guess, he's the chair of this committee. So he sent us updates. There's also a position paper that came from the Oregon, I think it's the Oregon Public Land Owners Association, who normally works with private property owners, but they are reviewing this closely, they do have some experts. They sent us their position paper and said, "This is not legal advice, but we recommend you sit and wait." Because this is sort of working its way through the process, we have gotten some activity from our federal leaders, because this is a FEMA program, and, but it required basically changing the riparian zone to 107 feet from normal high water surface, which makes almost every lakefront lot unbuildable that's left vacant. It would extend so far into property, potentially across the street, some of them, you know, the old way on S.S. Street, so... And it's, it's sort of a one-size-fits-all solution to some challenges that are, when you read the description, it's about fish in some places, and it's about a pod of killer whales, which aren't in our neighborhood, that's way up north, and so anyway. So that's still in process. It was supposed to go in effect January 1st, or you would expect a visit from your FEMA rep. For a small community, that could be three years before they get here, and it turns out we don't have much in the way of structures in the special flood hazard area anyway, so that's what's at risk, is if they change the flood insurance rules for a property that needs flood insurance, and we have very few to zero that are potentially affected. So we're just watching that. The current 50 feet has been established for many, many, many years, and I think we could apply with that generally, so... So anyway, that's, that's still ongoing, and the legislature is starting up, and so I get lots of emails, and at this point, not a statute report, nothing's changed, but just a lot of, obviously, a lot of opportunity for changes to legislation and so, so I'll keep you informed if I can. And then everyone has a copy of the permit report in front of them. With the one additional short-term rental application, does that bring us to 30?
Yes.
30 total. Any questions on the permit list? All right, if not, we'll jump right into the new business, Dune City's water rights, and we have the Water Master's Office here, we've got some representatives to help answer questions. Is there anything you wanted to present? Do you just want to take questions? I know we had, I think we only had one question that came from council, if I'm correct, is that the word? I'm not sure if we had, who had a que... We asked if there was any questions, this minute, and so, you have one?
I didn't, but I thought of one.
Okay. So anyway, how would you like to do it?
So we can do some introductions.
Sure.
Then we'll do a little spiel about just some generalities, and then maybe open up for questions, if folks have them.
All right.
And then the one question I received from the council, I'd like to address, or at least talk about, and then I think I heard that, was it, is it Stinson, Stensen?
Stinson.
You, you had another one that you came...
If, if it's a possible question, then I'll wait till everybody else, because I'd rather do it myself.
So does that sound...
Yeah, please.
So Susan Galvin, I'm the water master, many of you I've known and have spoke to before. I brought two very important people with me today. One is Justin Dillon. He is the Southwest Region Manager, so he's my boss, and he is also the boss of two other water masters. He manages, and not to leave Lane County out, but this little piece of Lane County, Douglas County, Coos County, Curry County, Josephine County, and Jackson County. So again, Justin Dillon, his, I made sure his business card's out here, so feel free to grab one of those. Also, more of equal importance is the new Assistant Water Master housed out of my office in Roseburg. So it's the old adage, you want to talk to the person in charge, or the person who knows what's going on. Ryan will be out here taking measurements, dealing with a lot of researching of water rights, dam operation down on Silkus and Hackenich. So again, Justin and Ryan. Ryan doesn't have business cards yet either, but call me and I'll make sure you can talk to him. Over the last, I'll say month or so, I've been engaged in conversations with the mayor and with Lila and her staff, identifying water rights that are pertinent to property, as well as discussing the city-held water rights. There are four of them. I think it's safe to say they're mostly in good shape. Some requirements of those water rights have been submitted to the Water Resources Department in Salem. They are moving through the bureaucratic process that is government, so, but they are moving. We had a good meeting, I think a good meeting the other day with a number of folks in Salem, the experts in some of those other processes. One of them is the Water Management and Conservation Plan. And what is the city going to be doing? How are we going to do it? When are the timetables? So that was a big document. So pretty good shape. I also have one other, excuse me, one other staff out of the Medford Office that is working very closely with the office staff in identifying the water rights by street address, and then getting that information into a database in Salem, so it is transparent, it is easily available. You can go to the water right, click on a couple buttons, and see an address listed next to a point of diversion, that'll be your code. Those are all big improvements. Questions about any of that so far? Yes, sir?
So Susan, perhaps for my benefit and for the audience, can you describe what a water right is in terms of the state of Oregon, and why there would be different kinds or different types, and who manages those?
Okay. So in 1909, when Water Code was established, that is when our, I'll say, four fathers and four mothers established that all water in Oregon is public water. There's some exceptions, and they're small, but water is for the benefit of everyone. And so, again, with some exceptions, if you are going to take water, use water, you have to have a water right. Whether you're a city, whether you're, I'm a water right holder. For me to take that water, I had to get a water right. Water rights go through a process. You apply for them, you get a permit, you file a claim of beneficial use, then you get a water right certificate. They are, for the most part, authorize a specific point to withdraw the water, a specific place where you can use the water, a specific amount, and a specific use. I'll use my water right as an example. I get to use a spring on my property that forms a channel. I pull the water out of it, I get to use it for irrigation and for domestic use. It's an old water right, lots of water out of that spring, it's a reliable source. The city of Dune City has water rights that allow for withdrawal from wellhead lake to use for domestic uses, municipal uses, some flow augmentation of creeks, you want to make sure the water stays in them for Mr. Fish. Did I hit all of them?
Irrigation.
Oh, irrigation, casino, yeah. Those are typically, those are individual stink rights. So the city has four water rights. They're all in pretty good shape.
Permits.
Permits, excuse me, permits, four permits. And then there are a whole host of other water rights privately held, where people put their pump in, they pump the water to their house, they may get their house, domestic use, and some irrigation, they may get human consumption only, that means no outdoor use, or some combination of all of those. Feel like I'm missing something. So if you're taking water, you have to have a water right, with some exceptions, get a specific amount for a specific use from a specific spot.
Probably the other would be, we have a lot of individual users, and then we have some on community systems.
Correct.
So an added complication or simplification, depending on which side of your pump you're on, but...
Right. So the community systems...
Three or more connections.
Three or more connections require Oregon Health Authority Drinking Water Program, need some testing done. You have a number of community systems, some big, some little, but again, a water right had to be obtained, right, because you're taking water. Yes, sir.
Can you, can you define a specific amount? You said specific amount. How, how is that determined? Per area, per household, per property?
Yes.
That's pretty vague.
Well, so let's break that down.
Okay.
So how much water do you get if you're irrigating 40 acres? Now, that's not what you guys are doing over here, right? But I tell you, there's a specific amount, and it's a 1/80 of a CFS per acre.
Okay.
So that's .0125 times however many acres, and that's the amount of water that you will get authorized blindly. For domestic use, back in the day, and back in the day is about my age, so we'll say mid-sixties, early seventies, you would likely get .1 CFS for domestic use and about a half acre of irrigation. That gets whittled down the longer you go. A new, a new water right for human consumption only, you would likely get .005 cubic feet per second on your water right, which no outdoor use, that's just, just your household use. It's a lot of water. .005 over the course of the day is 900 gallons, gallons a day, something along those lines. Okay, so how do you monitor that? Very easy with big property, right? Because I walk out and read their meter, and if they're a big user, for you guys, it's a lot harder. But I do know that if you are underneath the Dunes City water rights, you are required to have a meter, and those meters are monitored. I, I have little to no concern that many folks out here are using too much water, or let me rephrase that, using more water than they're offered.
So to follow that, that point, maybe you could describe for us what a water master does, and, you know, not every part of the state has as much water as we do.
Right.
And I know that the state had an enforcement concern about illegal grows in drier parts of the state, and in Eastern Oregon, where there's already culture going on, it's a more dire equation, but could you describe for all of us what a water master does?
Sure. In the summer, it's easy. My office is charged with distributing water in times of shortage. So that, that, I will tell you, every year in Douglas County, we shut people off. And thankfully, most of these people are used to me knocking on their doors. Water rights have a priority system, date on them, and that's the first in time, first in right. So if you're the old farmer that settled the first homestead and got your water right, it's going to have a real senior priority date. And then it gets newer and newer and newer, and again, every year we shut people off because there's not enough to go around. There's just not enough to go around. There are a couple uses that trump everything else. People, right? People, it's, it's going to, we are going to be in bad shape if I've got to start shutting people's house off, right? And there's, there's, plumbing is important, sanitation is important, drinking water is important, livestock is also another exemption. Try to keep cattle out of the creek when they're thirsty. Try to, so those things kind of trump everything else. Water masters also do a great deal of gauging. So if you're ever driving down the road and you see those little, they look like green porta potties, those are gauging stations, and we have equipment in those, there's often telemetry, we have some equipment that goes into the creek and monitors the water flowing by there. Those are often in cooperation with the USGS, most of that data is available online. So those are the, in times of shortage, that's, that's all we would do. I heard earlier sometimes people are hard to get ahold of, don't call me in the summer, you're going to get my voicemail until I get home late at night. Yes, sir.
So I didn't understand one question, I think, maybe I don't hear so well, but did you say that most people in Dune City are using more than allotment?
No.
Less than?
Less than.
Does the Dune City system of water rights, does it have a finite cubic foot measurement, or is it an overall right that hasn't had a cubic foot measurement awarded to it yet?
Let me rephrase to make sure I understand. Does the water rights held by Dune City have a limit to how much water they can use?
Yes.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I'm not aware of any water right statewide that does not have an absolute limit.
So if it has a limit, do we know how close they are based on projected usage?
Yes. I want to say the mayor and I did some math two months ago, because you have this limit, and with all the users, you're, I'm going to say, you're not even close yet, so there is room to grow. That, that's just, that's forward thinking, right? You're, you're growing, and folks predicted that.
If, Susan, if, because we did talk about this, and this is just my math, so don't write this down, we'll delete this from the record. But I believe, so one of our, the, the, one permit says it's 1.5 cubic feet per second, and one for the dam says once you've been pounded, your 410 acre feet is 1.4. So there's, but anyway, I plugged in the, I believe I used the 1.4, and it's 1,014 acre feet a year if it flowed nonstop 24/7, it's 330 million gallon per day. And I think the last report, we were something like 77 acre feet three years ago, 59 acre feet two years ago. So all that metered water, that's on that right, we were about, we were, yeah, we were a percentage, I mean, we were like 10 or 20% of the, the max, because you don't draw water 24 hours a day, you know, it's...
Right.
So the number on paper presumes we could save that and distribute it, you know, over time, but our measurements, that's why we're, we're trying to get all those connections metered, and the bulk of them are, and now our accumulation on those meters, we were, we were well under that number, so...
Yes.
Thanks, thanks really to Jamie. Jamie happens to be here tonight, because these are like three, four, or five year ago numbers that we're just trying to put the math together.
I'm scared of your question. And it's a question I've had for a very long time. Our annual reports tell you our usage on a monthly basis and for the full year. We have no way of knowing what the others that hold their own private permits or certificates are using. So I'm guessing you guys are checking, because I know the lake has a limit of how much it's, you know, or at least a span, a estimate of how much the lake can serve, and I think that's what you're saying, you're concerned about that.
Right, well, there's...
And if you don't count all of the users...
There's the part that we measure, and it's not all the homes, and then there's part that's the required flow downstream of Silkus, and then there's a whole bunch of individual permits on Silkus as well.
Right.
And then there's the requirement to maintain, you know, enough flow at the dam for fish and everything, so yeah, it's a bit of a complicated problem.
So there are... So there are some, and I'll call them private or non-Dune City water rights, that require reporting on an annual basis. There are a lot of older water rights that do not require any sort of reporting. So do, do I know how much is coming out with everyone on the lake? I can give you a theoretical number by just going max. If everybody used their full amount, what is that total?
Thank you, that answers the question. That's what I came up with here. Is a, yeah, there is no way.
So do I understand correctly what the mayor said and what you said? Is that we're really at only a small percentage of our maximum capacity, irregardless of private systems, public systems, whatever? We are way over-serviced with water.
Correct.
And so we don't really have to worry about growth or new connections or, you know...
So this is where, I'll go back to water master mode, what do water masters do? We had a really bad year and, or a really bad series of years. Would I start growing concern that you guys do not get your water? Yes, I would. That's what water masters worry about all the time because we face it every year. Not over here in Dune, little wet Dune City. But could it happen? Absolutely, absolutely. So that makes me, you know, I don't like seeing wasting water, right? I certainly don't overuse my own because the grand, I'll tell you, when the grandkids come over and leave the faucet on and my holding tank runs out, I can't do the laundry, much less take a shower at the same time. So it's important to recognize that you could get into times when you don't have enough. And silcoos has a quality issue.
Yeah, that's a good point. As a community, silcoos pollutes a lot more and quality goes over now with the debt.
Yes, sir.
All right, first and foremost, I'm not complaining. I love living here. I love, love the opportunity to have water, I'm literally glad. But just a curiosity question.
Sure.
I, when I moved here almost eight years ago, I used to write the water usage down and then email it in. And then since then, the new meters came out. So it makes it accessible for someone to come by and read the meter. Okay, so that's my house. And then as a few years went on, then there was a project that required some residents to have a fish screen put on their pumps.
Yeah?
Okay. So I did that, complied with that, which is fine, I'm not complaining. But my curiosity question is that my neighbors who have two pumps in the water, pumping all kinds of water out, it's not required to be metered, not required to have a fish screen, so I'm saving fish and they're sucking up fish? Common sense, it's just, I can't figure it out.
There, there are water rights that require, and I will tell you, the cities require in our city. You've got to have a fish screen on it.
But not everyone does.
The city's water rights are required, those people who are underneath the city's water rights are required to have fish screens. Your neighbor who's got granddaddy's water right from 1950?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
Okay, but the granddaddy, that's another curiosity question. Now, I understood, and I may be wrong, but my understanding as a simple person, a grandfather right would be for the primary property owner at the time. But if the property is sold and resold and sold and resold, they still have the grandfather right?
So you, what you're, what you're talking about is a perpency.
I just don't understand.
And I get it. So remember how I said water rights go through a process? You apply, you get a permit, you file a claim, you get a certificate. Anytime prior to that certificate, it would require an assignment of the file. It's a, it's a personal property right at that point. And that's not quite the legal use, but once it becomes a certificate, it is pertinent to that land. You can sell it 422 times and that water right just follows the property, not the owner. So it's, it's kind of like a bar. If you buy a property, the bar goes with it. So I think that's what you're speaking to. So that 1950 water right of your neighbor's, whoever buys that property next, gets that 1950s water right.
With the same rules that apply, way more certified.
To some extent too, though, you know, the one path for things to maybe catch up to what we just consider maybe today better water management, right? Four and a half million Oregonians, that's not necessarily what it was in 1907, right? Kind of change in things like that is if that property owner decides they want to make some form of change today to that certificate, it may kind of reset this whole evaluation process to become more, more restrictive and have more conditions. So there still can be a change if somebody decides, well, I want to now, because of convenience and there's pumps today and not gravity fed diversion, I now want to put a pump in. Use, ODFW, Division 33 views to protect salmonoids. So things can still get more restricted, but to Susan's point, once it's certificated, unless you make a change, it's lost. And, you know, as things have changed, so have, you know, old decreed water rights which predate water code. Might be one page when we say where it can come from and where it goes because that's what we were doing prior to water code. Want to do something today, it could be anything to the law. Because it's just, to try to better manage the resource is just knowledge and the structure of change, so.
Yeah, that was my example. Even the newer properties, I always required to do this.
It may be...
Which is fine, I'm not complaining.
Yeah, that's, that, I, I get it. I would be happy to speak, to encourage your neighbor. I know it's just fictitious.
Well, there's more than one.
There's two, there's a lot. I would, I would encourage them to put a fish screen on. Yeah, you got to clean it and yeah, it's a pain and there's maintenance and da-da-da-da-da. ODFW, and I do not work for ODFW, I'm sure would be happy to figure out how they can help you with a fish screen.
Vol, volunteer, right? Because we can't force...
Vol, and terror, I can...
But they have grants and funding programs to try to urge folks.
To do that.
To do that.
But they, you've got to get them convinced that we're not here to...
And there was a question earlier to like the total water volume then, like, as a whole as a community, is it going to be enough? You know, anytime an application is made for new use, as content has changed, we have a water availability model that's based off of a 30-year historical environmental record. We have 480 groundwater observation wells that are wells managed by the department. That's how, somebody touched on earlier, concerns with the Hardy Basin and critical groundwater areas. That it just, that provide the data to, if a new request comes in, does the historical record demonstrate that additional use would be available? And so that's one way. Next time a neighbor or somebody wants to put a new straw in the ground somewhere, that, you know, people who prior, be that the municipality, the irrigator, a single user, there's a big review process to try to determine that there won't be additional injury to existing holders. Because it is a, a resource that's, in some bases, as our technology and data has improved, you know, we've already seen that some bases are already over allocated. And so it's, and that's a Western who has problem. I mean, look at Colorado. But, you know, our new director, my old boss, says, well, we reserve the right to get smarter. So I do appreciate that, so. As we move forward, we try to, you know, do the best we can to better manage the resource. But we're also developing a new update to our water availability model that's just got, you know, data and a scientific process today that wasn't available with the historical record to just try to gain a better scientific handle as new uses will waste advantage. And for existing uses, we have authorization and conservation to, you know, an old 100-year-old poorly maintained, leaky irrigation ditch that loses half its water to evaporation towards a CPM? Oh, can we come up with grant money to fight that so that we put the water back in the system? So it's lots of moving pieces to, you know, water rights which are very complex or can be.
So I will, I just want to kind of reinforce a couple of things that Justin said. So, and I'll put it in water ma, and I'm a simple person, I'm a simple gentleman. It doesn't take a lot of science to know, there ain't any water in the middle of August if you go inland. It's dry, it's parched, everything's sandy, wells are going dry. There's, it gets hot and dry. So our water availability model also demonstrates that. There's no water available in the middle of summer. It's gone. It's been long gone for a long time. The other thing, I want to make sure, my fellow water masters always make sure we say this, just because you have a water right does not guarantee you get water, right? It means you have the authorization to take if it's available. But water masters do not create rain. Again, these are problems for inland. You guys got water. That's, that's, that's three quarters of the battle. Yes, sir.
She's a veteran.
Okay. Well, I just was a little confused by things that both former city administrator mayors have said and our new mayor saying about, I'm confused about. I thought that we were, silcoos is not the same as Wobeg at all. The state has the rights to Wobeg, not Dune City. So why is it...
Silcoos, huh?
If, if that's what you're saying. Well, no, what I'm confused about, as you were talking about grandfather rights, our families lived here for three generations, came here in the 1920s.
Did they have water rights in 1920?
Yeah.
Great.
Well, I don't know, they did what was being done back then.
They did.
Yeah. So, yeah, thank you.
She knows exactly which property.
But I'm confused because I'm like, what is, when you're talking about the lake, are we talking about silcoos or Wobeg could be helpful if you could delineate that? Because some live on one, others live on the other.
Where do you live?
I live on, silcoos, I live on the silcoos, south of the river.
And I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to rely on Jamie's good brain because I don't have my stuff in front of me.
Your next door neighbor, you're in this room.
I would, I'm going to presume that your granddad, who lived on silcoos like, went through the proper way to get a water right when he established his home out here. That would suggest to me that you have a, not a Dune City right, but an individual or some people call them state rights.
And we're still the family, same family even, because the house is not sold, same family still.
So if, if your granddad or whoever did the proper thing, went and get a water right, he got one that's a pertinent to that same house that you've been at for many, many, many years. So I will do better because one, you're right, one of my first questions should have said, silcoos or Wobeg?
It's confusing. As I hear each of you talk and I go, which lake are we talking about? Like Jamie just referred to the lake, I assume she's probably talking about Wobeg.
If we're talking city water rights, we're talking Wobeg?
Yes, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am.
Make sure exactly which we're talking about.
Good break.
Go ahead.
Do state rights on water go to rain? And is it surface water or subsurface water is also governed by state of water rights?
So when, when I say all water, that is both surface water and groundwater.
Okay.
Now, when you're talking rain, so there's been some, a lot of news about can you catch rain? Of course you can, on a permanent impervious surface. So think roof, think parking lot. Rule of thumb, water master wisdom, if it's going to make mud, it's mine. If it can't make mud, it's yours. Roof, parking lots, capture wind, clean cistern.
A well never makes contact.
A cistern is not a well. A cistern has water that fills from the top. You can bury your cistern, send the rain spout down into it, rock that, that's awesome.
Okay.
And it's just, it's just rule of thumb when I say make mud. If it falls on the mountains, makes mud, runs down the hill, that's my water, right? Does that make sense?
That does make sense, thank you. Because it is very confusing and you helped, you helped.
So when we drill a well for a home, somebody calls up and says, I need a home well going, I normally turn that in and log down to the state as a well.
Correct.
Right? But none of the people I've drilled wells for solo homes to that had wells drilled, as far as I know, have filed for particular water rates through that well.
So remember how I said, with some exceptions, a groundwater well for a domestic use that includes up to a half acre of non-commercial lawn or garden is exempt from needing a water right? If, and this is getting to the counselor's point earlier about what do water masters do when we take measurements and we regulate? We also enforce. We had an enormous cannabis problem, enormous. And the further south you went, the bigger the problem was. You don't get to use that exempt domestic well to irrigate your pot because that is a commercial use. Now, all that said, we're getting a real good handle on all that marijuana, real good handle. Douglas County, about to run out.
So is it handled like they're farmers or differently?
Many more regulations as it relates to marijuana. It is not sugarbeets. It's not hay. So handled differently. There are legal means. There are legal means to apply water. And I will tell you, Justin's staff in the Medford office has got this down too. They're doing a bang up job, bang up job.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. The point is, is that the water master and Justin and your staff and all of you are working together to allocate water resources that you have nothing to do with water quality, right?
Correct.
So water quality becomes the obligation of whatever water user is, is partaking of that water. So if you're a well owner or if you're drawing water through the Dune City right out of the lake or if you're diverting it from a spring like at your house, the obligation is yours, not the water master, not the state, to make sure that that water is suitable for drinking. Is that correct?
That is correct. That said, I am happy to help. We have a lot of contacts at the drinking water program at the Oregon Health Authority. But I am not a quality person. Not that I don't care, it's just kind of not in my jurisdiction. Happy to help.
My second question, and I'll direct this to both you and Justin. Do you believe that fish filters, fish filters are effective in science? Are they effective science on a home use where you're drawing water from a lake?
Boy, you want us to walk in there, don't you?
I just want you to... I just, personally, I don't believe they are. As a scuba diver and seeing fish behavior, I don't believe there's ever going to be a fish that gets trapped in any pump that's unprotected in Wobeg Lake or elsewhere. Now, I read the statutes, I asked you about them earlier.
Did you find it?
I did find, there's four different statutes. And they speak to larger commercial systems where you have a larger intake. So I can see a larger intake having, you know, some issue with salmon or other fish life that could become in peril. But when you're talking about opening about... But when you're talking about it, I don't think about that big. You know, I have to go down and scuba dive my fish filter and wipe it off and clean it and get it going. But I'm receiving reports of these pumps burning out because not everybody in the, in the community has a scuba tank and knows how to use it. And so this is an unnecessary expense. So if the primary use of water is for human habitation, then maybe we need to relook that. Now, I realize it's probably not something you can change because it's a legislative statute by the legislature in the state of Oregon.
And not, not within the water resources set of statutes.
Exactly. But what would your opinion be about? And I promise not, I promise not to quote you, but is your opinion, fish filters are effective? Justin, come on now.
Well, that's not my purview of expertise.
Oh, come on, Justin.
Now, I mean, there, there are other things too that have been enacted, passed legislation, which was also by Division 33 reviews, which allow, you know, for folks that want to make a change or apply for a new water right, basically ODFW gets to make a review and weigh in on what other conditions may be required to mitigate perceived potential impact to endangered salmon. So through their science, you know, often that may be mitigating some other impact or new impact. And mitigation can, you know, stem from a variety of things. It could be a fish screen, it could be planting shade trees on a diversion on a stream bank, could be installing large weight debris that, that's certainly within their science. And what I'm, you know, not all, wouldn't speak to you really.
Okay, yes.
I, I can speak to a, if you threw in a 10-inch line into the north of the wall, yeah, you should probably have a fish screen on it, right? That's why I haven't seen it.
10 inches is good size.
That's, and you're, you're a serious pumper then, right? So if that does not specifically speak to your question, I would invite you to speak to John Spangler at ODFW. If your water right, whether we agree with it or not, if your water right requires a fish screen on it, I would strongly encourage you to have a fish screen on it.
Okay, but this is not something that, this is an ODFW question, not a water master question.
Yeah.
And the only intersection with that is it is a condition of your permit or certificate.
Right.
And you must operate your permit or certificate within the terms and conditions that are listed there.
And they have a regulatory component in that review of new right, right?
Yeah, so then they make me go and knock on doors to make sure you have a fish screen on it. And if you don't, then I try to get you to come in line. And then, you know, if it's a 10-inch line, you're gonna make it happen right quick, right? Until then, we will work very hard at voluntary compliance. But it is, it is, it is a hard issue and especially for you guys over here. A lot of organic material out there, fish screens, gotta scrub them clean. You may have to hire the council member to put on a scoop here to come over and do it for you.
I'm not a volunteer.
Well, you can't scrub off rust.
If it's rust, well, exactly. And so I would, there, there's even more expensive things you can buy. And so that's really what we're talking about. It's expensive now. And if it's a reoccurring problem, great, I know how I would feel.
Blown pumps.
Correct. And did I mention I'm a water right holder? I get it.
I know. I get it. You've got a lot of mixed feelings within the community in regards to these fish screens, the, of what the purpose is, what the...
And I would encourage you to invite ODFW here.
Yep, and the cost, of course.
Oh, and the cost and, and the maintenance. And then your pump blows up, whether, whether it's because it's sucking air because it didn't shut off like it should.
And actually, Councilor Stinson, you had your pump blow up.
Our pump, my community did, we, we did lose one pump, yes. That we had to replace. We just paid a $17,000 bill to have it.
17,000 for your pump?
No, not for the pump, but that's to get the diver, the electrician, everything to get it back in order.
And Councilor Stinson, are you, you're on with the community water rights, right?
I am not on the, I have my own water right.
Your own, so somebody has to be.
Yeah, but I, my community, I do have five or six individuals in my community that are on the Dune City water right.
So that 17,000, that cost everybody that.
Yes. Well, our system company, our, our company, our group.
Yeah, so you have a group, not just one individual. So that's why the cost was much higher than a big pump, right?
And soon she said electrician.
Yep.
Right?
We had an electrician out there, we had to, even though my husband dove on it as he has certified to do that, it was the cost of rebuilding the platform to pull it out of, to make sure, which was not in the original, it was the rust got in the pump, which was the issue. And where the pump blew.
Yep.
Water, water, water is, is...
Frozen.
No, it, it came from the, the actual fish screen. And I'll be concerned the fish screen that came out. So, but I do have a question.
Yeah, you have a question.
Actually, I have a couple of questions because one came up amongst everything. So at Dune City, one of the things we're looking at is a municipality. What happens to our private owners out there within Dune City if they have a water right and we try to create a municipality? How does that potentially affect them? Yeah, municipal system.
So...
Would they be required to join?
I don't think that is something that water resources can require. There are some requirements for a city system, right? I know that the idea of creating a municipal system over here has been in the works for, I'll say since the 70s. I want to say a couple times it's been thrown out to raise money.
I think it was in our survey too.
Since the 50s, right? The charter says in 1963.
It's kind of the initial water right.
Yeah, those initial water right applications for municipal use are because municipal system, that would be owned and maintained and operated by the city. Like I live in Roseburg. My place in Roseburg, I turn on my faucet and I pay the bill, woo hoo. My house elsewhere, it's a private system. I don't have the benefit of a city system with their testing and maintenance and, and stuff. So that was a long answer to, I don't think I can make people get on it. Now, what the city can do.
Our earlier engineers analysis, I read there's three, I read all three last week. 68 or 69, 71 and 91. 91. And they all said, no, under current law, couldn't force it on everyone. So it would be all future customers most likely. And anybody that says, I don't like it or I don't want to deal with it or I have a crappy well or whatever. So they did a couple of cost models, you know, if everyone joined, if 75% joined, 50% joined, and what that would look like for, you know, spreading that cost and paying off the cost of destruction. So yeah, I have the same understanding, reading all the original engineering, that it's not forced on everyone citywide, it's build it to, to all the locations that made sense. And then, yeah, some people would join if they had a problem with their, their own system. Yeah, some wouldn't.
And just one other question, thank you. Does, Dune City four permits, do each of those permits have to have their own diversion point or are they just any water that's removed from the lake?
Great question. They don't have to have separate points of diversion. I, I'll step out there and say, you know, odds are two of them are the same, but it's not required and those can change. So if a spot doesn't work out or whatever, there's means to alter that or change that.
But I think, I think the 91 engineers analysis showed a single point of diversion. And did that show two tanks or one tank? That's had two tanks, two 300,000 gallon reservoirs, you know, on the east side of town and then a single kind of in the middle. But that was just a sort of first level of feasibility. So yeah, that could be, that for the municipal, you could put all, the entire right out of a single location, pump it and then distribute it. So there's...
Okay. So that's mostly how larger cities do. They usually have a contingency. So if this place doesn't work out or has an emergency that we can grab from here and if it's an emergency in that, of course, we're gonna, we're gonna work something out.
That was my question, because if one permit, something happened with one spot, then then as a city, we have three hundred ones to, to work off of.
The only other note I have is from the council's question about increasing the lake level. And...
And this was specific to, to your point, Silkus with the operation of the dam, because we see big fluctuations and they've replaced the equipment, they're operating it better, but the question came up from a perspective of launch ramp stocks and fishing and salmon. If the low, low number was a foot higher and the high number was a foot higher, bleed more water to flush that out and fall and that sort of thing. So we, we asked that question and it's, it's a bit complicated how to get there.
It, it's possible and it is part of the water rights that mandate the levels. It, it's written into the water right that if folks would like to engage in a change in that, it's available. It's going to be spearheaded by the OFW. That's who's gonna, gonna have a lot to say about it. The, I, I've been pulling measurements on Silkus most of this last year. It's gotten a lot better and it's gotten a lot better. The dam operator is agreeable, available. I don't have to hike all the way down to Silkus anymore. And it's not hike down, it's the hike back up. We met with him today. We are encouraged. We still have work to do. So again, it's the dam operator. He's a good guy. He's a good guy.
Sure. Is part of that opening up the fish ladder?
The fish ladder, I have never, today was the first time I've ever not seen that fish ladder full. You know why fish ladder wasn't full? Because the gate was, one of the four gates was wide open and there had to be 100 CFS running through that gate. So the fish ladder, I've never not seen it full.
In operation.
And operating as it should. Yeah. Same with Tackage. It's got an identical dam on it.
Just another question. So...
I'm scared of your question.
There. You want to talk about that. But Justin, your question, so if we do increase that lake level, is that, is that gonna trigger possible new requirements from ODFW?
Yes. I cannot imagine that if we engage in this process that there are, it's not, can't all be good. There's gonna be some other requirements. It might be that gay might pour water in there for, to flush out some sandbars.
Flush out those trees?
At least it's not caught in the gate.
That's one of the biggest complaints with the...
And then it's a little right now, some of the people are like, I can't get the doors in there.
Well, it was at 7.4 today, max is eight. So, you know, it's, it's a small system. It's, it's tough to manage. I, I think he's done very well since last year.
My sister actually remember life before there was the dam. So it's changed things a lot and I can show pictures, we have old pictures of before the dam.
Right.
And it really varied then.
Yes.
And, you know, it was said at one of the meetings, there is no flooding problem in West Lake of Dune City. Well, they're sure used to it and sometimes there's still is because of the dam. And maybe because it's locked up about with the log jam you guys have been talking about. But another thing I wanted to bring up as far as the lake level is how does that affect the fish? Because a lot of people come to Silkus to fish and a lot of people live on Silkus Lake to fish. We have had very poor fish the last few years and the people who fish complain about it and don't know what's going on there. Maybe it's pollution, maybe it's something else.
Well, I, I don't think it's a single, single issue. I would love to hear what ODFW says about it, what some of their recommendations would be. Would they recommend storing more water in Silkus to improve the fish habitat? Those are great, great questions. Yeah.
If they raise the level in Silkus, what's that gonna do to Woke?
Hopefully not.
Nothing, yeah, no. It would still be Woke, Woke.
Yeah.
Because Woke, the old timers have told us that on our corner on Clear Lake, when the water's getting up on the pavement, that means nobody's regulating it out of the lake.
Well, I, I, I think that might be oversimplifying.
With that water on the asphalt all winter.
And I will tell you, those gates, all four were open.
I know.
And you can only release so much so fast. And predicting the weather, we've got weather on it, but predicting how much it rains and runs down and how quick it fills and how fast we can get it released, yeah, that's, it's, it's, it's tough.
Just to, to add into that, I know quite a bit about what's been going on down there. And contrary to popular belief, the individual that's operating it... Now, that being said, there are a lot of logs in that river that need to come out of there. My son went down there just the other day because he wanted to go pick lures. Prime time to go pick lures that everybody lost all sandwiches. Okay? He gets right here and now you can't even get past right here. I mean, we're talking right here, okay? There's way too many logs in there and that is creating a dam process above the dam. So it's not allowing the water to move in the manner that it needs to move. And until we get enough people together to get in there and get that taken care of, it's not gonna change. So the, the matter of the dam operator's not opening the dam or he's not taking care of it properly is not, not the case. There have been some issues. Now, the issues have been primarily corrected. But we worked our butts off to make sure that this city was taken care of in a proper manner over the last year since he was thrown into this. And he's done a marvelous job. So until we can get enough people with enough initiative to get chainsaws and get down in that river and start cutting some of those logs out, it's not gonna change. I mean, you can, you can open that dam and you can say that you're gonna let X amount of water go. But as soon as you have a king tide, that's, that's backed up. If you've got a 10-foot king tide, it's backed up at eight foot on the level of this lake. So that's not gonna change and you're not gonna get any, if, if you're at nine foot and you've got 10 foot out here, that means you're backed up, you're not, you're not leaving any water heading out. So, I mean, it's, it's a balance and you gotta watch. Okay, how much water can you get out of here while you've got a low tide?
If I'm not mistaken, we'd have to get permission to remove those logs from the water also, correct?
There is permission in this office on the computer. I have permission on my email and it's been there for at least four years, if I recall correctly, Duke, don't you?
The member, yeah.
That we can go in there and cut anything that is within five feet of the shoreline. So you have to leave five feet of the shoreline. So basically from here to that, end of that table, you have to leave. But anything that's in the middle, you can cut out.
Which of the lawyers are law?
There is so much in there, it's unbelievable, unbelievable.
And this is connected to forest management. I called the forestry company about the property across the way and we live on this side of the outlet. But the other side, somebody had purchased that just wanting to build home after home after home. When he found out he couldn't do that, he just logged it to the point that it's really extreme. We have complained to the forestry department, they said, well, there's not much we can do about it now. But that's a lot of those logs now that came down because they were just left with nothing to hold them there. Everything was cut around them, it was like clear cutting and just one line of trees left. We don't know, living in this windy, rainy climate, that's not enough.
The mass majority of the logs that I have seen in between here and the dam are, have fallen from the sand side of, of the hill. Ninety percent of them, I would say. And so, you know... And so, you know, you've got this sand that's being washed out by the river and continuing to collapse down and pull down and pull down.
Right.
And then you've got, you know, ATVs that are running right down in below the dam and, and basically plugging the river because they're pushing the sand down and they're so hard and so cold that the river's almost plugged. So until they decide that they're going to make these people stay out of there with those ATVs, you're also plugging up the lower half of the river.
Like when they bring them down.
So.
Oh, sorry.
The duty of keeping the river clean and open for public use is the Oregon Marine Board, I think that's what you mentioned, Melissa. And in the last conversation I had with them, they said, well, you have to tell the state to give us more money. Their yearly budget was like twenty grand. He said, we can't do any.
Yeah, I was wondering, like, you know, like how so much would they mention a group to volunteer, seeing as that the, the state and funds.
Well, it sounds like they got that the last time we ran into this.
They, they told us that there was no funding available for it. The county told us that they didn't have any funding available for it. He did come to me here a month ago and said he wanted to get into, down at the lower part of the dam and take a tree out that's below the dam because there had been too many complaints from kayakers on that specific tree. So they're going to target one tree, but they're not going to take another one.
That's a start.
That's the first twenty years.
It, it's a start, but.
Yes, I know.
There's a lot, there's a lot of work that needs to be done if we want to be able to regulate the lake level in a little bit better of a fashion.
Right, as well as maintain the Silkus River Trail.
But I'm here to tell you.
Which is like the only place in the world that you could float from an immol lake all the way down to the ocean and back.
You know, the, the lake level was at seven point six when we started getting rain and we ended up right at the top of my boat launch when it decided to quit raining. Had it kept raining, we would have flooded and there would have been not a damn thing that anybody could have done because that lake level was seven-six about the second week of October, which was plenty early for any of that to take place. So these people that are complaining, that are calling Susan and, and ragging on her every time she turns around, I mean, they've got to understand that it's actually being operated in, in a pretty darn decent manner. Correct me if I'm wrong, Susan.
No, thank you very much, Rich. I agree, the, and especially sir, thank you for your extra efforts that you've put forth over the last eighteen months or so of, of trying to manage a very difficult system. You know, it's not like you just turn the faucet off, you know, it doesn't work like that, so.
It, it's taught us so much this spring or this fall, I mean, and, and it's still not exactly a correct science and we're constantly going to learn from it, but we do the best we can.
And it's been a lot better.
And you know, I mean, it's like everybody comes to me and they say, oh, I hear you're the new dam operator and I tell them, no. The only thing I am is the guy that reports the numbers to him and helps him out and says, I think we should do this, but it's his ultimate responsibility, dog breed, that fashion, he sees fit. Now, I thank him for the opportunity to have a voice from the city. That's, that's been huge for us.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Perhaps that's another volunteer day or something as we've been promoting with games and whatnot. We could get that one. Well, you know, if we have permission, then why are we not doing it for the best interests of our, you know, our town?
I, I got a flat deck twenty-four foot pontoon barge that would be perfect for doing that. Anytime that anybody thinks that they can find somebody that will get together and do it, I've offered it for four years now and I just haven't been able to get anybody to help out.
No, we'll help, yes. It's going to work.
Well, I want to thank Susan and Ryan and Justin, thank you so much for coming tonight. And we definitely would still like to entertain the level.
I, I, I'm happy to entertain too.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question of Susan?
Sure.
What's the status of the dam?
Where are we at?
So, you mean today?
Yeah.
No, I mean ownership. Ownership remains the same. George.
Igerpin?
Yes, there it is. Is still the property owner. And that's it, that's it. I, I would be happy to work with new owners, old owners.
No one would get, won't find the money?
But, you know, if you have any rich relatives that work by the dam, I'm sure George would entertain that.
Oh, I try. He's not very entertainable.
No, he's not. No, he's not.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item ten. Do we have Mr. Claycomb or a representative here tonight of Mr. Claycomb?
May I?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something before we get started on this.
Well, I don't know if we're going to start on this, it's Mr. Claycomb's appeal, so.
All right.
We won't have a discussion on his, his appeal. He was ready, we had a little staff presentation and then he has appealed it. He's been noticed. So seeing, I think we'll just move on. We won't take any action, correct? This was his opportunity for the, an appeal. This had been continued three times at his request, so this was his date.
The, the fine, are we leaving at, at a stand?
So the proposed fine was per ordinance five hundred dollars a day. It was at, it was capped at fifteen thousand dollars. His previous fine was what?
Forty-nine, seven, six?
Forty-nine, seven, six. He agreed to pay it after the meeting and then hasn't, that has gone to collection. So this was a second unrelated action, definitely, but, so yeah, I mean, since he didn't appeal, there's nothing to adjust. And that was part of his, the discussion last time was, in the appeal, we adjusted that, the fine. So I would say, yes, it's as is. And we'll go on to the next item. We'll see if we hear.
Twenty-seven.
But we can talk for a minute afterwards, if you have anything else you have to share. And then the old business is related to the discussion and really it's that this has been ongoing, we've met with the water, the water master's office and their staff and today, just today, we got to meet with the Department of Fish and Wildlife because they overlap and there's a regulatory element to take now out involving those water rights. To your point, sir, I agree. I have the same question, is it, it looks very inconsistent. We asked that very question and it depends on the date of the right and, you know, municipal right has a set of rules, an individual right, an older individual right has one set of rules, a new individual right would have the same rules as the municipal right, is my understanding. So, so yeah, depending on your neighbor, somebody building today, who seeks their own right would be told they need a pump and a fish screen. Somebody who's got a, getting one, if they don't make any modifications or anything to their right, you know, like, you know, they want to divide the property and, and have two homes or whatever, anything that doesn't get reviewed, they would be exempt. And then anything attached to a municipal right, if you were granted a city, a share of that city municipal right at the time of permitting, though the rules now apply. And that's, and we meter, we have to meter as well, so the individual users, depending on those, may or may not meter as well, so I mean, like, there's, it is confusing, a lot to get your arms around, so. So it's not a one size, because it's all question and answer, but anyway.
So may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So with all, with the Dune City Water Right, if somebody buys a home that is serviced by the Dune City Water Right and it predated the time during which they had to have a fish screen and a meter.
It wouldn't, because all municipal rights now require meters and screens, period.
Okay, and that is because of what? Statute?
Oh, yeah, it changed some years ago.
Because you're a municipality.
If it's attached to that municipal right, yeah.
I see, so.
It's a higher standard.
I understand. So if you bought a home on Dune City and on Rolling Lake, if you had a well, you would not need a permit. Right, city of Dune City would not have to have a meter.
Right.
But if you pull your water from the lake, you're participating in that share right, basically.
Yeah.
And a change of ownership might require you to put on fish screens and, and a water meter.
Yeah, that fish screen probably shouldn't have existed, but yes, it, it's typically going to be expected and, and noted.
I see.
At the time of change of ownership.
For that kind of occasion.
So.
And the water meter should already be there too.
Yes, and so in all those that we know of, and there's still a few left, but yeah, those have been metered and, and so to that, I mean, this started with the ordinance, the proposed ordinance change. We'd say we're leaving that alone for right now because it, you know, generates new questions, but, and that adds revisions to the, do we record? So the recommendation is yes, record, but we're not sure what to record. We got pushed back from recorder's office as well, so this started with a, a change to an ordinance, but we're leaving that alone right now. It's turned out there's lots more questions and answers to get before we do anything. So, so today I just turned a brief update and, you know, we had over an hour discussion, so.
Another, just a, a statement or maybe a question for Susan, is if the city gets to the point where they decide or, or we're going to build a water system, as they go through and they start connecting individual houses that have a water right, those water rights then get assumed by the city and, and would follow the city's water right at that point, do they not?
I believe that is an option, that you can absorb, that's not quite the right word.
Right, reassign or whatever, I don't know what the law calls it.
Take control of. If I lived on Silkus and you folks put in a municipal system and I wanted to join your system, I believe there is a way that you would absorb my private water right. Yeah. And I just want to reinforce, I would sign up for the city system. I think, I think it would be a great idea.
Yeah, thank you. So, any other questions on that? Because I didn't really have any, I mean, we had quite a discussion. Item eleven is, or sorry, twelve is executive session, we have no, without an executive session, for the good of the order. Let's start with Duke first tonight.
Anything? The only thing I can bring up is just goes along, what I was going to say, I'd have to excuse myself from this.
Okay.
I've known him since he moved here.
Okay.
My family's done a lot of work on that property.
Okay.
And I benefited from some of the work on it.
Okay. Appreciate that. Melissa?
For the good of the order, I'd like to kind of propose an idea, an idea for our city or town of Dune City. Would people be interested in food trucks? I mean, we have no place here in our location, how many people are tired of restaurants and Florence, the same thing over and over and over. If we had a property where we could entertain food trucks, either at our community events as Lila was mentioning, or a permanent area that we could do for, you know, to help our people out there and maybe generate a level of reinforcement.
Out here on parking lots.
I said, that's true. I'm not saying we're, I'm just proposing for this, for the good of the order, I think it's a great thing, you know, it was.
We'll take a little research, yeah.
I think it would be beneficial and I think it might entice people, you know, to come out.
You wouldn't have to drive six miles to get some people.
Most people here right here might be able to walk.
All right.
Just saying.
Do that for one of the community events to see what?
Yeah, see what it is, I mean, we can reach out to Game Time, we can reach out to, and it's called Sandwich, if I say correctly, just sounds funny, you say sandwich.
All right, thank you. I am, for going down the table, I am modeling the new U C, Mary Temple shirt with one of the logos that was submitted in our contest and only two of them arrived, so I have one that you don't, but you have one too.
You just.
Two of them arrived yesterday, so I took them home, watched it, said, I'll wear it to the movies, so. They've all been ordered, we don't know why. Two, depending on what size you're ordering, they all come in different boxes, so. So you may not be as good looking as me, but you'll have a nice shirt.
Flash away.
Chris?
I have nothing and careful for them, so Jo and she has nothing.
Oh, very good.
Larry? Two things.
Yeah.
I'd like to recognize Officer Alexander with Link County shit.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight.
And I, I've had conversations with Officer Alexander and he is assigned here in the evenings and evenings, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And so this is the guy that if you call, you have a good chance.
He's out there somewhere.
He's out there.
He's got signs everywhere.
Assuming they don't, assuming they don't summon him to those tempestuous situations up in Eugene, he'll be here, so put a name with a face.
Yes.
The second thing I'd like to bring up is that we had some great paving on Cloud Nine.
Good.
There's one little area that hasn't been completed, I think they ran out of asphalt, to be honest.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that they'll be back.
They should be.
What they did was professional and it's very much appreciated.
I agree.
They've done a streak with.
Absolutely.
Good.
Ford looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's.
Ford and like.
I heard there's a couple, they're good, yeah.
I had little hope of this happening until spring, but we had this dry weather.
Yes.
Boy, it's been a real nice thing, so.
Are they coming back because the notice that a lot of us were seeing, so they said, I think through the seventeen?
That's what we initially told, but they did take a little more than they anticipated, so I will follow up to make sure that they're coming back to Cloud Nine.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing else, I need a motion to adjourn. The one time, since it's not, I think, all right.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, we should talk some more.
We need to work.
One way or the other.
Okay.